Julian is an all-star who shines bright. Outside of school, Julian enjoys playing sports, including baseball and basketball. When Julian grows up, he hopes to be a professional baseball player. If that doesn't work out, he'll resort to his backup plan and pursue engineering. Julian would like to thank his NJE teachers for being so supportive and super nice. Let's give Julian a round of applause. And next, I would like to call up Gracie Anne Moore. If Gracie Anne will come or not. Gracie Anne is the daughter of Ron Moore and Amanda Delcorto. And she is also a fifth grade student at North Joshua Elementary. Gracie Anne is a hard worker and is showing all kinds of improvement at NJE. Her smile and willingness to lend a helping hand shines bright at NJE. In her time away from school, Gracie Anne loves playing with her puppies. When Gracie Anne grows up, she hopes to be a teacher and would love to come back and teach at NJE one day. Gracie Anne wants to thank her teachers for making class fun and caring about her so much. Let's give a round of applause for Gracie Anne. And now if everyone will stand up and join these students in the pledge. And guys, if you will turn this way, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Joshua ISD will be our highly acclaimed model of educational excellence. Let's give these kiddos another round of applause.
Thank you, Anne. Great job. Thank you, sir. Great job.
You're welcome.
I think so, yes, sir?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have a PUPMIR 2020 final school PUP
Yes, thank you. So my name is Rebecca Metzger. I'm the Chief Financial Officer here for Joshua ISD. And I'm going to be presenting our school first rating. This is our financial accountability rating given to us by TEA. School first, first is the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. This is the state's school financial accountability rating system, which ensures that Texas public schools are held accountable for the quality of their financial management practices. The system is designed to encourage Texas public schools to better manage their financial resources to provide the maximum allocation possible for direct instructional purposes. This is our 21-22 score, which is based on 2020-2021 data. So the data lacks a year behind, but they issued the score for 21-22. The rating system is determined by this range, which is kind of a traditional grading system. The district must answer yes to critical indicators, one through five, or else we would automatically receive an F for substandard achievement. So we are required to present two years of scores to you at this public hearing. So our 2021 score was a 98, which was superior. We did answer yes to all critical indicators. And then our 2022 score is an 88 for above standard. And we did answer yes to all critical indicators. So we're going to go through each one of the indicators that makes up this score. And there are 20 of them. Number one, was the complete annual financial report and data submitted to TEA within 30 days of the deadline? Yes, it was in both years. Was there an unmodified opinion in the annual financial report on the financial statements as a whole? Yes, an unmodified is considered a clean opinion. And yes, there was in both years. Was the school district in compliance with the payment terms on all debt agreements at fiscal year end? Yes, we were in both years. Did the school district make timely payments to TRS, TWC, IRS, and any other governmental agencies? Yes, we did in both years. Number five, was the total unrestricted net position balance in government activities greater than zero? This has not been scored. This is not being scored by TEA because of some accounting rule changes that make this difficult on districts. They are in the process of changing that indicator, but for now, it's not scored for any district. Number six, was the average change in fund balances over three years less than a 25% decrease? Yes, it was. We had actually an increase in our fund balances over the past three years. Number seven, was the number of days of cash on hand and current investments in the general fund sufficient to cover operating expenditures? We must have more than 90 days of cash on hand to receive the full 10 points. Yes, we did in both years. Number eight, was the measure of current assets to current liabilities ratio for the school districts sufficient to cover short-term debt? This ratio must be 3.0 or higher to receive the full 10 points. We did receive the full 10 points last year. This year, we received eight points. We fell just a little bit short of that ratio at 2.86. Number nine, did the school district's general fund revenue equal or exceed expenditures? Yes, it did in both years. Number 10, did the school district average less than a 10% variance when comparing budgeted revenues to actual revenues? In 2021, yes, we did. In 2022, for the 2022 score, this was not scored for any district because of COVID, because that 2020-2021 year where this data came from, it was very hard to budget and things like that because of COVID. And so for any district, this is not being scored. Was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school districts sufficient to support long-term solvency? In order to receive full 10 points on this one, it must be less than .6. Or you can receive the full 10 points if you have high enrollment growth, which is considered 7% or more in five years. And we had been meeting this, receiving all 10 points for the past several years based on that enrollment growth. This year, because again, this is that COVID 2021 year where our enrollment dropped because that was when we returned from COVID. So we didn't meet the full 10 points based on that enrollment growth. We did receive two points. Our ratio was .95. Was the number 12, was the debt per $100 of assessed property value ratio sufficient to support future debt repayments? This must be less than or equal to four to receive the full 10 points. We received eight points for this one in both years. We're just a little over five on that ratio. And as our property values continue to increase and we continue to pay down our debt, that ratio will improve. Number 13, was the school district's administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold? Ours was. This needs to be less than .10 to receive the full 10 points. It was in both years. Number 14, did the school district not have a 15% decline in the student-to-staff ratio over three years? We did not have a 15% decline. We received 10 points for both years. Number 15, was the school district's ADA within the allotted range of the district's biennial projections submitted to TEA? This one, it was within that limit for 2021. This is another one that wasn't scored due to COVID for the 2022 year. Number 16, did the comparison of PIMS data to like information in the annual financial report result in a variance of less than 3%? Yes, ours did. That's something we check every year before we submit our data to TEA. Number 17, did the external independent auditor report that the AFR was free of any instances of material weakness in internal controls over financial reporting? Yes, they did in both years. Number 18, did the external independent auditor indicate that the AFR was free from instances of noncompliance for grants, contracts, and laws related to local, state, or federal funds? Yes, they did in both years. Number 19, did the school district post the required financial information on its website in accordance with government code, local government code, Texas Education Code, Texas Administrative Code, and any other statutes, laws, or rules? Yes, we did in both years. Number 20, and this is the last indicator, did the school board members discuss the district's property value at a board meeting within 120 days before the district adopted its budget? Yes, they did in both years. There are some other reports that are required with this public hearing related to payments made between the district and the superintendent and board members. This one is for reimbursements received by the superintendent and any board members. We did not have any reimbursements for that year ended August 31st, 2021. Also, we are required to report if there's any outside compensation received by the superintendent for professional consulting services. Our superintendent did not receive any outside compensation. We are also required to report if our board members or superintendent received gifts from any of our vendors or things like that. Our board members or superintendent did not receive any gifts. This would be within economic value of 250 or more. And last, is there any business transactions between the school district and board members? And we did not have any for the year ended August 31st, 2021. And the last thing that we are required to report with this public hearing is the superintendent's contract. This is posted on our website at that page there. Or you can go to our homepage and to the required postings. And that is always up on our website. And that is the end of my presentation. Is there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now moving into superintendent reports.
Okay. So in our workshop, we reviewed the enrollment report, attendance report, our ADA report, child nutrition report, property tax collection report, our monthly financial reports, monthly and year-to-date status of special revenue funds, our check register, police department report, JASD calendar of events, the district systems check level three. And now we have our campus presentation by North Joshua, Ms. Tammy Watts and Ms. Tracy Green.
Okay, so again, I'm Tammy Watts. I'm the principal at North Joshua Elementary. And I would like to highlight this month, something that happened fairly recently, like Friday recently, at North Joshua. This is the first time, we have been talking about it for several years, that we wanted to do something on Veterans Day to honor our veterans. And we made that happen on Friday. It was a collective effort between our specials teams and our teachers. We all just kind of banded together. And I just kind of want to give you a glimpse at kind of what that looked like on Friday at North Joshua. So school-wide salute to veterans. We paused for the entire morning to salute our veterans. And it was kind of a twofold purpose. We really wanted to honor those that served, not just those that served, but the families of those that served. Such an important piece of what happens. You know, the families of our kids, some that have actively serving members in the military. And then to instill patriotism with our young students. I was talking with the dad before this started. You know, many of the students in the schools today, including my own, who's a sophomore at Joshua High School, don't really understand the whole war thing. Thank goodness, they don't understand that. But the patriotism, I think, sometimes gets lost in that too. And so to instill patriotism in our young ones was a very important piece of what we did on Friday. So we celebrated three different ways. Our students wrote notes. That's a kindergarten note that you see there. So K all the way to V in beautiful cursive in fifth grade. But each one of them took time to write a note. Some of those notes went to Applebee's and various places in our community where the veterans were receiving free meals. And then some of those notes were given to the veterans that came to celebrate with us on Friday. We said thank you through music. And you're going to get to experience a little bit of that music here in just a second. And then we also said thank you by honoring the veterans through a reception. This was my favorite part of the whole ceremony. They played all of the divisions of the military, those branches. And the veterans stood when their branch's song was played. And I was flabbergasted by the number of people in the audience that served in the military. And we had a representative in both ceremonies from each branch of the military. Many representatives from each branch of the military. So here's kind of a look at some. I could go on and on for hours about this. So I just selected a few that I could do kind of a, here they were in service and here they were in our reception on Friday that we held. So there's a few of our veterans. Myla and Foster's uncle, sergeant major for 26 years. And then Gracie Emma Hewitt's great-grandfather was there with us. Several of them came in uniform. Thank you to Mr. Nelson, served in the Navy for 12 years and is currently a nurse for Department of Veterans Affairs. And thank you to Mr. Luce, who served for 21 years in the Army and was with us on Friday. Some more veterans that were there. Arabella Jawan's father, Ramsey Jawan. He is active duty, US Army. And then Kiara Quinones's grandfather, Eduardo Quinones Jr., who is also US Army. And then here's a little glimpse of kind of how things went on Friday for you to experience. So that's a tradition that we're definitely keeping. It was wonderful. And at the end of the ceremony, the veterans were ushered down our grand hall by the drum line that you saw there, and we honored them. And it was so wonderful to be able to stand at the end of the hallway. Ms. Green and I stood there and shook every one of their hands and said, "Thank you for your service to our country." And so I think that we accomplished those two things. And so, um, I think that we accomplished those two things that we set out to do, and that will be something that we continue to do at North Joshua Elementary for many years to come. So if you are the audience tonight and you are a veteran, um, thank you for serving our country. Um, I know that that's not just about you, that's about you and your family and those around you and the kids that you send to school every day, and, and we are grateful from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for serving our country and protecting our freedoms.
Thank you, Ms. Watts. Yes, and now we have recognitions. Mr. Hickerson will be presenting those tonight.
Okay, can I get Leo Schumake coming to the front, please? Leo is the son of Christian and Jesse Schumake. He's a fifth grader at Cattle Grove Elementary. On November 4th, 2022, the district elementary spelling bee was held under the guidance of our elementary librarians, Julia Doty at Cattle Grove, Christian McBride at Elder, Cheryl Bagley at North Joshua, Deona Richardson at Plum Creek, and Angie Hamm at Staples Elementary. To qualify for the district level, students in grades three through five competed at the campus level first. Students had initially placed in a classroom-level written spelling bee competition. The second level of qualifying required placing first in the campus oral spelling bee. Each school crowned a champion in third, fourth, and fifth grade. Fifteen students competed at the district level and finished in 22 rounds, ending with the word smidgen. The champion of this year's district spelling bee is Leo Schumake, a fifth grader from Cattle Grove Elementary.
Leo, congratulations. Congratulations. And we're going to get you a picture with me and this, um, turnip. We'll get you a picture. Let's give him another round of applause.
Now we're going to call in the Nichols Middle School eighth grade A-team volleyball. Nichols Middle School eighth grade A-team volleyball is coached by Helen Williams. Nichols eighth grade A-team are back-to-back district champions. First district champions in Lone Star Eight. The district, or the ladies had an undefeated season, 10-0. Players are Julie Cox, Dylan Hammons, Brayden Holland, Lauren Jones, Madeline Lacy, Irene Loick, Kenley Mason, Zaley Masters, Bailey McClinton, and Ruby Vincent. Let's give them a round of applause. And now we have the eighth grade B-team volleyball team from Nichols Middle School, who is coached by Jason Wallace. Nichols eighth grade B-team are district champions of Lone Star Eight. The players are Kelly Corral, Brenly Gray, Brayley McBee, Eastla McDaniel, Austin Miller, Naomi Ortiz, Faith Rice, Liliane Sam, Julia Stewart, Anna Terrell, and Caitlin Van Ripper. Let's give them a round of applause.
Loughlin Choir, Loughlin and Nichols Choir.
Okay, now we have our Loughlin and Nichols choir members. Coaches are Kelly Dinnington and Kristen Willis. Kelly's Dinnington is at Loughlin, and Kristen Willis is, is at Nichols. They are representing, the, the girls up here are representing the eighth grade, girls and boys, excuse me, are representing the eighth grade. These students represented Joshua ISD well at the Region 30 Middle School Choir Clinic and Concert on November 5th at Weatherford High School. These singers were part of the 340 students who made this an elite choir after the October auditions. There were, were a total of 1,002 students who auditioned in our region. Haven Riggs, soprano II from Loughlin. Shelby Horn, tenor II from Nichols. Carly Anne Loomis, alto from Nichols. Gianna Malat, soprano II from Nichols. And unable to attend, Aubrey Castaneja, Castaneja Alto from Nichols. Let's give them a round of applause.
Okay, yes, please take a picture. Yes, sir.
At this time, in public forum, portion of our board meeting. Board encourages citizens of the district, our employees, anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or a representative of group, to do so this time. Boards ask that you, uh, pertaining to public education issues in no longer than three minutes.
Hello, my name is Maggie Wright. I'm a taxpayer since about in the 60s, and thank you for serving and, uh, as forefathers and superintendent. And I'm concerned about the bullying and the ISD police not writing reports, and it's been difficult to get public records. Young families of their own children. When my daughter and I worked to defeat the bloated and non-transpirant mom, I got to know some of these mothers and some of the ones that are also trying to get my records. I still have not received the police records where they came to remove me, and all of you know that I was in a place that was, it was legally electioneering. I also met many young families that were experiencing children being bullied over and over again. I've listened to them addressing the board, meeting after meeting. We had two children that went through this Joshua ISD. We were always able to settle the problems with their teacher, or their principal, or the bus driver. We never had to go to the school board to get a problem addressed or settled. And I just am really concerned because, um, a religious group also came, and we came and got a group to come, and Ronnie was here, a board member then. We stood behind the board because this religious group was trying to get prayer taken away from before your school board meeting. And I just am really concerned because, um, since I last addressed the board meeting, I've talked to several other parents. They've removed their children because of bullying. It's not just these parents that's been addressing the board. It's rampant. It's, it's beginning to be that it's not addressed, like I saw the Instagram, the bullying on there, the Fight Channel, and for six months, you said there was nothing you could do. But when a grievance was filed, it seemed as though the, the, it was taken down, so there was something you could do. And our children are more important than a school that doesn't address the, the problems just to have a pristine record. Are we going to have more suicides? Uh, these children are being bullied over and over again by the same people, and you all know that in with that Instagram, that group, you know who they were, over and over again, they were allowed to bully. And like I said, there was some on the bus that were bullying my child, but they took care of it immediately because it was a repeat offender. When we know that, we need to address it. And I was appalled watching this live stream last month. We know now the feelings that you have for these parents.
Good. Thank you very much. Next up, Georgia Ed.
Hey, good evening. Um, so it's been an eventful couple of months for the board. Um, I do want to thank you for your time and service, each, each and every one of you, that's very appreciated. Um, thanks to the live streaming, the public got a firsthand view of how some of the district leaders and board members really think about parents. I was in shock while watching the live streaming last month, and I couldn't help but gasp and shuffle when one of the district administrators turned to the cameras after returning from a closed session and asked if they were being recorded. Yes, it was live streaming. Then a board member makes a rude remark about a parent who was in attendance earlier, and there was much laughter. Wow, just wow. Um, certainly wasn't a professional moment for all involved. It was pretty embarrassing and pretty telling. As board members, you are elected officials. Elected officials are in place to represent the people who elected them. You are not in place to protect a superintendent or to do as constantly instructed by a law firm. As elected officials, the citizens may reach out to you at any point. They deserve for you to listen. You also have a duty to the parents and community members in this district. Laughing at and mocking them is quite unseemly and extremely very unprofessional. Texas Association of School Boards is a taxpayer-funded lobbying organization. Maybe you don't realize all of this, but this organization is not at all popular with conservative political groups in Texas. The organization is the one who is training this board. There are other organizations available. The law firm you are currently using is training this board with these trainings that are not at all designed to be pro-parent. I think each of you should look into this and consider other options, and remember that each of you has been elected to represent the people and not this organization. You should also take a serious look at yourselves and consider if making fun of parents is part of your job duties. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Subject A, Consider Consent Agenda Item.
Okay. He's got all of the minutes from the October 17th board meeting. There are no budget amendments for this writing. Um, the accounts payable were reviewed in the workshop, and then the purchases over 50,000, Ms. Metzger. And if you will just stay up for the other items as well.
The purchase over 50,000 is for Lisa Craft's legal services, 57,820. That's the only one.
Okay. And so those are your consent agenda items for subject A. My recommendation is that you will approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I hear a motion. Motion by Ms. Pruitt. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kevin Lee. Any further discussion or question? All favor? Seven oh.
Okay.
Subject B, Consider Revision to Board Policy, CDA, other, local, other, did you put that screen on our camera?
Oh, you can't see it.
Other Revenue Investments.
Okay. Ms. Metzger.
Yes, so we are requesting a, um, small revision to board policy CDA local, which is for investments, and the revisions are on page two, the paragraph about liquidity and maturity. Um, we're requesting that we increase the maximum dollar-weighted maturity of a pool fund group from 180 days to three years. Um, we're requesting that this, um, that the maximum allowable weighted average maturity of all investments combined be, um, increased from two years to three years. And then that last sentence, just a small change from, um, reading the board may specifically authorize a longer maturity for a given investment within legal limits. And those are the only changes that we're requesting for that.
Okay. My recommendation is that you approve the revisions to board policy CDA local as presented.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to approve agenda item B as presented.
Motion by Ms. Loughlin. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or question? All favor? Seven oh. Subject C, Consider Resolution Regarding Revenue of Investments, Policy and Strategy.
Okay, Ms. Metzger.
Yes, um, so required by the Public Funds Investment Act is that we go over the, our policy and strategy with you annually, and so this resolution is, um, just, you're approving the resolution that we have reviewed our policy and strategy with you. Um, we always do bring this to you in November, and so I did review with you in the workshop our, our investment strategies, um, which are in our policy there at the bottom of page two, and those include suitability of an investment to be, uh, to the financial requirements of the district, preservation of safety of principal, liquidity, marketability, and diversification.
My recommendation is that, is that you approve the resolution regarding review of investment policy and strategy.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'm going to motion.
Motion by Mr. Kevin Lee. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cody Lee. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Consider List of Qualified Brokers Authorized to be Engaged in Investment Transactions with the District.
Yes, so this is also an annual requirement that you approve the authorized brokers that we may invest our money with. And so this is, you have a list there in front of you. These are brokers that we either currently use or maybe we have used in the past. It doesn't mean we definitely will invest money with these brokers. You are authorizing these, that list.
Okay, my recommendation is that you approve the list of qualified brokers authorized to engage in investment transactions with the district.
I make a motion, we approve the list of brokers.
Motion by Ms. Pruitt. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Seven oh. Subject E, Consider Res-
Oh, six oh.
Six oh, I'm sorry. I've got one outstanding. Subject E, Consider Resolution Regarding Approval of Independent Sources of Investment Training.
The Public Funds Investment Act also requires that the investment officers receive training. We're required to have eight hours of training every other year. And this, what, what you are approving here is the source of that training. You are approving for us to receive training from the Center for Public Management at UNT. That's the one we usually go to. They offer an eight-hour class in October and we usually go to that one every other year. But just in case that one happens to not be available, we also are requesting that you approve TASBO, the GTOT, the Education Service Center at Region 11, and First Public.
Okay. My recommendation is that you approve the resolution regarding approval of independent sources of investment training.
Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve subject item G.
Motion by Mr. Lawson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hunter Byrd. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Seven oh. Subject F, Consider District Financial Audit for the 21-22 school year.
Yes, we have Lindsay Kenner here from Snoggy or Williams to go over that with you. I'm going to help her get those binders passed out to prevent she'll go over that audit with you.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Lindsay Kenner. I have partnered with Snoggy or Williams as an auditor. And I'm going to walk us through some of the key points of the audit report and we are going to start on page one of the balance report. Page one is the certificate of the board and this is where you approve or disapprove the audit. It requires the signatures of both the board secretary and the board president. There's an unbound certificate that if y'all can sign that and return it to Rebecca, she can scan that and we'll drop that into the PDF, which we will submit to TEA. And if you can also sign and approve a couple of the bound copies, this can go back to Rebecca just to keep on file in the business office in case anybody would ask for one. And the TEA submission is due by January the 28th. And we will move over to page two and take a look at our auditor's report. In pages two through four are our independent auditor's report. And it looks a little bit different than what y'all seen in the past because we had auditing standards that were implemented this year. So as I'm reading through this, the flow is a little different, but we're going to start in the first paragraph under opinions. So we state in the first sentence, we have audited the financial statements of Joshua ISD as of and for the year ended August 31st, 2022. If you move down to the next paragraph, financial statements present fairly in all material respects financial position for Joshua ISD as of August 31st, 2022. And this is a clean or an unmodified audit opinion, which is what you want to see in this audit report. If you move down to the next paragraph, under basis for opinions, we state that we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and also with government auditing standards. If you move down to the bottom of the page, under responsibilities of management for financial statements, I'm not going to read through this section, but I wanted to point out, this is a little different than the prior audit opinion. So this last, this paragraph on page two at the bottom, and then if you flip over to page three, on the next page, that outlines the auditor's responsibilities. So you have some pretty robust language about what management's responsible for the financial statements and then what we're responsible for as the auditor's auditing the financial statements. If you move to page four, the next page, in the last paragraph, we state that in accordance with government auditing standards, we also issued our report on our consideration of Joshua ISD's internal controls over financial reporting and on test of compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, grant agreements, and other matters. And this is one of your school first indicators that I'll go over at the end of the report. And I did want to point out that we did not have any internal control findings or compliance findings. And we will move over to page 16 and take a look at the balance sheet. Page 16 is the balance sheet of the district of August 31st, 2022. And just a quick overview of the format, if you look on the left side of the page, you have assets at the very top of the page, liabilities are underneath assets, there's deferred inflows of resources for property tax, and fund balances at the bottom. There are four columns going across the page, starting on the far left, you have your general fund. The next column is your debt service fund and those are the two major funds for the year. The third column are your other governmental funds, which are special revenue funds. And the last column on the right is the totaling column. The total assets of the district were 26,275. Total liabilities were 4,892. Deferred inflows were 686, 682, and fund balances were 20,696. And of that total fund balance of 20,696, if you move over to the general fund column, 16,643 of that was in the general fund and 16,601 of that fund balance was unassigned. And we will move over a couple of pages to page 18. Page 18 is the income statement of the district for fiscal year 2022. On the left side of the page at the very top, you have your revenues. Underneath revenues are expenditures, other financing sources and uses, and then fund balances again at the bottom. We have the same four columns going across the page. And I'm going to start by going over the totaling column and then we'll move over and take a look at the general fund. The total revenues of the district were 79,352. Total expenditures were 77,608. Other financing sources were 296,122. And that brought us to an increase in fund balance of 2,039,932. And again, the ending fund balance of 20,696. If you move over to the general fund column, in comparing your general fund for fiscal year 22 to fiscal year 21, your total revenues were 59,239 and these were up about 4.1 million from last year, mostly due to increases in property tax revenue and state funding revenue. Total expenditures were up about 6 million from last year. And that was in a couple of different functions, the biggest fluctuations. Function 11 went up about 1.7 million for instruction and that was primarily for increases in payroll due to raises and then also an increase in number of positions. Function 51 went up about 850,000 due to an increase in utilities and then also for property and casualty insurance. And then function 81 for capital outlay, that was zero last year. And this year, there was turf for the baseball and softball fields at 2,196. So this brings us down to, towards the very bottom, there was an increase in fund balance in the general fund of 77,613 and ending fund balance to 16,643. And we're going to move over to page 50 and take a look at the general fund budget. Pages 50 and 51 are the general fund budgetary comparison schedule. There are four columns going across the top of the page. The first column on the far left is your original adopted budget. The second column is your final amended budget. The third column were your actual revenues and expenditures. And the last column on the right is the variance between your actual revenues and expenditures and your final amended budget. So looking through the variance column, if you're looking at your total revenues, your actual revenues came in higher than budgeted by about 3.8 million. At the very bottom of the page, your total expenditures, your actual expenditures came in under budget by about 1.7 million. So those are both going the direction that you have wanted to. And the other thing I wanted to point out is at the very bottom of the page, your total actual general fund expenditures were 59,408. We're going to use that amount here in a second and we're going to move over to page Page 62 is the optimal fund balance worksheet. And you'll see at the top that it's marked unaudited. And this used to be a required TEA schedule and then they gave the option several years ago to leave this in the report as an unaudited schedule. And most of our districts such as this don't do that because it's a good tool to try and pinpoint what your general fund fund balance should be. So starting on the first line, your total general fund fund balance that we saw on the balance sheet was 16,643. Of that total, you had non-expendable fund balance for inventory and pre-pays of 41,202. If you move down to line six, this is where we use your total general fund expenditure amount. So your total general fund expenditures at 59,408 divided by, or 59 million, I should say, 408 divided by 12 is the amount on line six, which is 4,950. If you double the amount, that's what's on line seven, which is 9,901. So those two lines added together is roughly what it would take you to operate for three months. And that's usually what TEA says to use as a target. Line eight, the estimate of delayed payments from the state. This is the receivable for state funding for TEA August 31st. So this is a kind of a moving target as they settle up. So since you haven't received that cash August 31st and it's included in your fund balance, we add this back in to what your target should be. So line 12 is the sum of lines two through 11, which is 17,593. And then line 13 shows you if you have an excess or a deficit in your actual quarters to the calculated amount. So we're showing a deficit of about 950,000, but keep in mind that that TEA receivable is in that. So without that number in there, you would actually be over that optimum amount. And we are going to go to page 73, which should be the very last page in the balance Do I hear Rebecca go over some of your school first indicators? So these are for the fiscal year 22 audit, which she'll be presenting over next year. And these are indicators that we're required to report on for the audit report. And I'm not going to read through all of them, but I did want to read over a few that are directly related to the audit. And the first one is SF1, the very first line, was there an unmodified opinion in the report on the financial statements as a whole? Yes, there was. The next one, SF2, were there any disclosures in the report? Were other sources of information concerning non-payment and any terms of debt agreements at fiscal year end? No, there was not. You move down towards the middle of the page to SF5, did the report disclose any instances of material weakness and internal controls over financial reporting and compliance for local, state, or federal funds? No, it did not. And the next one, SF6, were there any disclosures in the report of material non-compliance for grants, contracts, and laws related to local, state, or federal funds? And no, there was not. So all of the responses were favorable. Y'all scored 100% on these selected school first indicators. And we did have a management letter, which is in y'all's cabinet, a trust letter. I'm not going to go over it. The only comment that we had in there is our standard comment about fund balance that we included in all of our management letters, just as a reminder where you currently were August 31st and to review your commitments and assignments if you need any of those in your fund balances throughout the year. So very clean audit, it's always a good sign when you don't have management letter components. So we want to thank you very much. Rebecca and the business office do a great job. They deserve what we need and they make our job very easy. So we appreciate them very much.
Thank you. Great job.
Anybody got any questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
I hope you don't come back quite as often. You seem like every, every other.
It does allow me to refer. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Lindsay. My recommendation is that you approve the 21-22 school year financial audit report.
Send it.
Motion by Ms. Pruitt. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Seven oh.
Yes, sir. Next is subject G.
Consider, G, Consider Deletion of Policy EF Local Instructional Resources.
And I'm going to call Ms. Oxford for this subject item.
All right, we are, the curriculum department and the librarians have gotten, have met together many times and have looked at EF local and we are asking the board to consider, to delete EF local and to consider adopting EF local, EF A local, and EF B local.
Which will be our next action item.
Yes. So EF local is the instructional materials, policy and, the current policy is, has a very broad definition of instructional materials. That includes textbooks, library acquisitions, supplementary resources, and electronic instructional resources. And so we are going to be recommending that policy split into two and then I'll talk about those then.
So my recommendation is that you approve deleting policy EF local.
Got it.
Which is instructional resources.
Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve subject item G.
Okay, motion by Ms. Lawson, second by Ms. Pruitt. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Seven oh. Subject A, H, Consider Addition of Policy EF A local Instructional Resources, Instructional Materials, and EF B local Instructional Resources, Library Materials.
Ms. Oxford.
All right. EF A local will specifically address the selection of textbooks, supplementary materials, and electronic resources. And it has five criteria there for selecting those and it also has information about if anyone were to challenge those resources. And so this, this is going to, EF A local is going to split with EF B local because then library materials we specifically address in EF B local. So that new policy would specifically address the selection of library books. So as our librarians look to purchase library materials each year, there are 15 criteria there in the policies for them to abide by in picking library books for their libraries. And there's information in there about parent consideration into what books a child is able to select from the library, information in there about challenging specifically library materials, and then gifts and donations of library materials, and then maintenance of library materials. So our, we're asking that you just approve both of those policies that will help us to further define our processes here in the district in purchasing instructional materials.
Okay, my recommendation is that you approve the addition of policies EF A local and EF B local.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, we approve subject I as presented.
H.
H.
Motion by Ms. Wilson. Second by Ms. Pruitt. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Seven oh. Subject I, Consider Revision to Policy DCE Local Employment Practices, DCE Local Employment- D C E local employment practices, other types of contracts, and D H local employee standard of contract.
Okay, Mr. Hickerson.
Okay, so in each of these policies here, we'll be replacing Chief Human Resource Officer with the Associate Director of Human Resources on each of these policies. And we approved, you guys approved Associate Director of Human Resources in our compensation plan last month. So we're replacing Chief Human Resource Officer with the Associate Director of Human Resources.
And so my recommendation is that you approve the revision to our policies, D C local, D C E local, and D H local.
Okay. Air motion.
I move we approve agenda I as stated.
Motion by Mr. Lawson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kennedy Lee, any further discussion or questions? All favor? Seven oh. Subject J, consider resolution for resignation acceptance.
Okay, so policy D F E local, which was changed in update one eighteen due to Commissioner's ruling on the acceptance of resignations for contractual employee allows you to designate someone, in addition to the superintendent, to accept resignations. In July, you approved that the resignations may be accepted by the Chief Human Resource Officer in addition to the superintendent. I am asking and recommending that the designate accepting resignations in addition to the superintendent change from the Chief Human Resource Officer to the Chief Administrative Services Officer. And so my recommendation is that you approve Chief Administrative Services Officer to accept resignations in addition to the superintendent.
Okay, air motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hunter Byrd. Any further, here a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lawson, any further discussion or comments? All favor? Seven oh. Okay, that's it.
Yes, sir.
The board will convene in closed session to discuss items authorized by the Texas Open Business Act, Texas Department of Commerce, section five five one zero zero one through five five one zero zero eight, zero four.
At?
At seven thirty-four.
...